Good evening. It's 6 o'clock and welcome to the Sandwich School Committee meeting of January 15, 2025. We will begin with the pledge of allegiance.
A pledge of allegiance?
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you for your hearty souls coming out on this chilly evening. The first public forum will be open. Anybody wish to be heard at public forum? Seeing no one, I will close the public forum and the first item on our agenda are donations.
Okay, so you have, well, good evening, everybody. You have two donations that are in your packet for approval. The first donation is a donation for $1,000. It's actually a grant from a relatively new group known as the Sandwich Foundation. It is a group of parents, many of whom were very actively involved in both the school and community playground projects, who've done some active fundraising. And the intent of their organization is to donate to, you know, really child-centered activities, fun activities that have impact for children within our community. So this $1,000 grant, as it's noted, will go towards sponsoring the Sandwich Public Schools Wellness Fair this coming March.
Can I have a motion to approve the donation made to the Sandwich Public School Wellness Committee from the Sandwich Foundation in the amount of $1,000?
So moved.
Second? Seconded by Byrd. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Five, six, zero. It is unanimous. The second donation?
Second donation is kind of unique and I thought I'd give you a visual on this one, but we have an alum of Sandwich High School who is in a upper management position with Under Armour and also happens to be an alum who played basketball for us back in the day, who has donated both home and away basketball uniforms made by Under Armour for both our boys and girls varsity teams. No cash amount with that, but they are in hand and I was informed late last week by Sean Donovan.
Is there an approximate dollar amount?
Well, if you do some quick math, 13 players, give or take, two squads, so 26, and then 26 times 2 would probably be 52 different uniforms. I don't know offhand the cost of a uniform, but, you know, I would say, you know, you're probably least in the 15, you know, 2,000 range.
That is incredibly generous.
Yeah, very generous.
There's probably, I mean, I'm not sure how many they actually provided. I mean, there's 13 on the varsity this year, I'm not sure on the boys, but there's probably extras on the shelf as well.
Yeah.
Motion to accept this very generous donation from Under Armour.
As the parent of number 11 on the varsity, and I forget.
Number one.
Number one, of course. I move that we accept the very generous donation from Under Armour for the basketball uniforms for both the boys and girls varsity teams as presented.
Any other discussion? Oops, second. Second by Danielle. Any further discussion?
Just to thank Cara Trent, Sandwich High alum, and who went off to play at UMass Amherst. So, thank you so much.
All in favor accepting the donation, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. It looks like 6-0, unanimous with tremendous appreciation. Thank you to both donors. That's pretty awesome. All right. Next item up is the student representative report who is here today.
Good evening. Hello? Okay. Happy New Year, everyone. Good evening. Sorry. I hope that you're all having a great year so far and we're just gonna get right started into the reports. Forestale, this year, they, this first term, they awarded students with a perfect attendance or so that, like, it was really cute to see everyone having their little placards. And it's good to also award them for things like this because it pushes them and motivates them. And Ms. Eastman has started a puppy program, which is similar to, like, you have a puppy and you take, it's a stuffed animal and you take care of the stuffed animal and it's like your responsibility. And it's good because it teaches kids about taking, like, being independent and, like, having something that you can't just, like, leave and go anywhere with. And then the art teacher had also had students create puppets in art class that they then performed. So it was like, they expressed a creativity in a great manner because they created the puppets and then they also got to make plays and shows with them. And now, moving on to Oak Ridge, 4th grade went to Barnstable High School for a Young People's Concert and it was great for them to get exposure to the band that was playing. And similarly, on that same note, students performed at the Center for Active Living during, like, the holiday time so that they could share the spirit of what's, of how we celebrate in school for people who may not necessarily get that every day. And everyone get ready. They're also having a second annual math super, math fact Superbowl. And they take this very seriously. They have a balloon arc and everything. And if anyone's ever made a balloon arc, they know it's very hard. So it's gonna be on February 7 and they're all, they all practice beforehand, they rehearse their math facts, and they then perform and whoever wins gets the trophy. And moving on to high school, I, last or a couple meetings ago, we presented on the playbook workshops. They were very successful at Oak Ridge, which is good news, and we've picked our next round of 25 students that, from 7th grade, and in collaboration with Hanover, we're gonna be working together with them to have more workshops, which is very exciting. And we also had the Humanities Honor Society inductions. It was English language and it was, English language, sorry, and history. English is new this year, which is great because we're getting more opportunities for a lot of students. And the biology students recently dissected frogs, and I remember doing that. And as weird as it is to say, I loved cutting the frogs open. But I know a lot of people didn't enjoy that, but I would say that it's really nice because it's not like nice to cut open a frog, but you guys know what I'm saying. And then Chicas for Change has recently partnered with Georgetown Project Rishi. Chicas for Change was founded by Cora Palmer Nelson, and she's also a part of Georgetown Project Rishi. So we are working together to create a workshop for girls in rural India about self-esteem. And we've come up with some, like, stories and some, like, activities that they can do, which is great. And we, today, we also took a field trip to the, a listening circle that was hosted by the Massachusetts Commission on the Status of Woman that discussed a lot about the I Am Bill. So hopefully we'll hear more about that. And DECA, huge congrats to all of them because they took home 35 medals and six trophies, which is amazing. DECA has been growing a lot recently, so huge congratulations to everyone who has participated and to Mr. Givoni for the leadership. And another congratulations order for the students who participated at the Southeast District Music Festival because they have worked very hard. So they auditioned and then they got accepted and they performed, which is amazing. And everyone who is here, since we're talking about singing, I know you guys all would love to go to a karaoke rock band night. So in support of San Antonio High School's Class of 2027, on this Friday, January 17, you should all go and support them and be a part of their fundraiser because it would be lots of fun to hear a lot of people sing. And also, we have midterms going on this week, next week, so good luck to everyone who's gonna be taking them. So thank you guys so much. Do you have any questions or?
Any questions for our representative? Busy, busy, busy. That's good. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Shreya.
Next item is review and act on the meeting minutes of the regular business meeting dated January 8, 2025. Can I have a motion to approve the minutes?
I move that we approve the minutes of the regular business meeting of January 8, 2025, as presented.
Second.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Six, zero, zero. Approved. Next up, correspondence and announcements. I do not have any. Danielle?
Just to kind of piggyback on Shreya about the karaoke rock band night, Friday night, this Friday, January 17. Proceeds go to the Class of 2027. It's from, starts at 7 o'clock. There's a girls varsity basketball game, you could catch that, then come to the karaoke rock band and sing. Parent, Sandwich parent Greg Richards, who has had three kids go through the Sandwich Schools, two are previous, are currently in the schools, wanted to give back to the community with his band, and it's a really good band. We listen to them live a lot and it's a lot of fun. So Greg, his message, he's been trying to get it out on social media, "We want as many people as we can to show up." And it's $5 for students, $8 for adults. It's open to the entire community. You can come and sing, you can play an instrument or just enjoy the show. So singers, bring your voice, bass guitarists, bring your guitars. They have the amps and for once, the drummers just have to show up and play. So please come, Friday night, starts at 7:00 in the auditorium. Thank you.
I will be doing 8675309 by Tommy Two-Tone, just as a side note.
There is a list of songs. They're doing.
He posted them on Facebook, yes.
On Facebook, and they're really good songs.
Yeah.
JT's picked five that he'd like to sing. Yeah.
That's great.
We'll let him, we'll cut it down.
I have one additional announcement, nowhere near as fascinating nor fun as that, but I sent to the committee earlier this afternoon, we got an invite from the Cape Cod Collaborative for the annual Legislative Breakfast. I'm told all of our legislative reps on the Cape will be present. It's going to be a week from this Friday, January 24, at 8:30, not too far away, at the new intermediate middle school in Dennis Yarmouth. Our brand-new Executive Director of Cape Cod Collaborative, Dr. Hope Henscom, will kind of have the opening and introductory comments. And then there'll be three separate breakout groups, one of which I will be leading, on key topics related to all of our districts on the Cape. One topic being special education, second being facilities needs, and the third, interdependency, kind of like, where are there additional areas in which the Cape Districts can collaborate? So I intend on going. I kind of have to go, but if you are interested in going, please let me know and we can register you.
I had hoped to go, but I'm a chair of another board and it meets the same time, so I can't. So if anybody can represent us, Kevin, can you go?
A minute for the bagels.
Awesome. I may be able to attend.
Great.
Thank you. Superintendent's update?
Okay, so just a couple brief items today. First, just as a gentle reminder, the next time we meet, two weeks from tonight, on the 29th, we will be doing an hour early at 5:00 with that first hour of the Student Advisory Committee. I put in the background notes, in addition to Shreya, the four other students that will be involved. They're five terrific kids that I am sure will not be shy and will be very, very talkative. In planning for this meeting, Sue and I kind of discussed it and figured, seeing that it was the first meeting, maybe just kind of having an organic conversation about topics of passion, what they love studying at the middle high school, what they love studying outside, what are their perceptions around areas of need and so on. So really, really looking forward to that and will plan on 5:00.
What date?
The 29th. It's Wednesday, the 29th at 5:00.
It says here, the next meeting we have is on the 22nd.
It's, if all goes well, that 22nd is kind of a placeholder, Bert, with respect to the budget.
29th is the public hearing, correct?
Correct.
Okay. We traditionally have scheduled it for every, every Wednesday in January, depending on how long it takes to get through things and if there's follow-ups and stuff like that. So we can always change that later tonight.
So my second piece is just a very, very quick update on strategic planning. This morning marked our first full session of the District Strategic Planning Committee. We've got a group of 36 different educators, students, community members, our admin team. Sue is our school committee rep. In my humble opinion, I think the session went extremely well. We had, as I've talked about before, Dr. Ruth Whitner facilitate the session. Really, the key was kind of this, this protocol known as Back to the Future and kind of thinking about, in developing a five-year plan, what do we want our schools to look like in 2030? I think there was a tremendous energy, some great thoughts, and the consistent feedback that I got from everybody were just kudos, you know, to Clay, Henry, and Brianna, our three student reps. Just, it really, I think everybody, it just gave everybody a tremendous sense of pride, the way they were just outspoken and just represented themselves, Sandwich Middle High School and our district, just tremendously. So, you know, I don't know if you have.
The process was interesting and having gone through a number of these things, you always feel like they press you for time and don't give you enough time. And the meaning, well, it was all meaningful, but where we really needed to get some work done and come up with some outcomes, we really had a, we had an hour to work on some of this. So we really felt like we could reflect and think and share. So it was very good. And the students were amazing. The three students reported out from their groups incredibly articulate, at ease, comfortable, on point, and just a delight to work with. And so the groups that did not have students in them felt a little deprived because they didn't have that, that piece, but I'm sure that will rotate around as we do more work. So everyone will have that experience. So looking forward to the next sessions.
And that's my report.
Thank you. And moving on to old business, we started this discussion last meeting. Changes to the Sandwich Middle High School Program of Studies to include the competency determination. We had the first reading last week and Joe sent out a message to the families about this and really invited anybody that had something they needed to say or a question they needed to have answered to come tonight prior to our vote. So we will vote on this.
Yeah, I believe I forwarded, you know, some of you, obviously, Kevin and Danielle, being middle high school parents, probably received the message, but I forwarded it to the committee. I don't know if the committee has. I know I haven't received a single email response to it. I think it's pretty straightforward, hopefully in that message to our families. You know, I took something that, again, I considered to be a little murky with this distinction between graduation requirements and competency determination and try to boil it down and simplify it. But essentially, you know, the, again, the verbiage that you see and read would be the new verbiage that would go into effect upon the vote. And again, and the point that I made to families, essentially, you know, if you look at those three bullet points, those are things that we require for graduation anyway. Essentially, all we're doing here is we're applying our local definition of competency determination. Policy is something that is not static. Policy is something that's dynamic. And again, as I said during last meeting, I wouldn't be surprised down the road if DESI were to change this or to come up with some type of other definition of competency determination. That might be some other type of performance-based assessment or something to that effect. But realize, for all intents and purposes, this vote right now is to kind of cover ourselves, to cover ourselves from a policy perspective in the here and now, starting with the Class of 2025.
Joe, I just had a quick question, and I briefly spoke to BJ tonight about it. How would this affect our special ed students? There's been some role, some new, some guidelines released last week, perhaps, maybe? BJ, I don't know if you want to speak to it or?
Just in terms of, are we ready to make a motion and then we could discuss this under the motion?
Sure, sure. Yes. It could be forthcoming.
You can do it either way.
We can do it either way. Okay.
He's already at the table.
So can, with some?
And you can elaborate, and BJ and I have had a couple conversations in my office about this, but to my knowledge, again, for the Class of 2025, all students have met their competency determination, correct?
Green light. So, looking at the standards that are applied here, we typically have a 99% graduation rate for our students, and that's what we'll look at continuing to have. There are some students who have not received the coursework that's listed on this document, and they wouldn't have received the coursework that was on a previous documentation, right? We have different students on different tracks, depending on what the IEP team determined their goal was for when they left the Sandwich Public Schools. And so there will be some students who may, that may not be something that they're, they are being tasked with. So I suspect that our percentage is about 99% graduation rate. I suspect that's going to stay about where it is because the MCAS went away, but there's still the requirement for the good coursework. We want to make sure that the students are knowledgeable about those state standards that are in those courses that are listed and read.
Is there ever a situation where, for whatever reason, related to the students' learning issues, that they're not able to, for example, algebra and geometry, and coming from the community to college, we had very rare occasions where, working with the learning department, there were substitutions. Do we have that opportunity here as well?
Right. So we have the, the regular coursework with no accommodations, then we have accommodations, and then we have modifications. And we have some students that even with very significant modifications, they can be in part of the classroom and they can, you know, receive a lot of that good vocabulary and that exposure, but it's not that they're demonstrating those standards that are required by DESI regulations. So we run the gamut. There's always a continuum and sometimes the focus area for a particular student may not be academic in nature. Or may not be academic in nature to the level of demonstrating those standards that are on the screen.
Any other questions for Mr. McNamara? Okay, can I have a motion to approve the change in the course of studies to reflect the graduation, the revised graduation and additional competency determination requirements?
I move that we approve the change to the student handbook for the Sandwich Middle High School, specifically addressing the change in the competency determination requirements as presented.
Second. Second by Danielle. Any further discussion?
I just want to say, so I'm pretty vested in how this all vets out, and this looks fairly consistent with, I see, other districts across, at least the Cape, so far engaging in appropriate for this year's graduating class. I know that it continues to be a discussion and something that may unfold and may be different. And I do think greater discussion about students who may not meet a graduation requirement, may not be graduation eligible, kind of that, like, the path for parents to know that what the potential is for their students if they're not going to be able to meet these competency determinations. Because there are students with the most severe disabilities who won't be able to. So to know what their path forward is and what their options are for completion, I think would be important to include in this as well. But otherwise, I think it's, I think it's appropriate, it's, I think it's the best we can do for what the information we have right now.
Yeah, I mean, you know, Taylor's here, as she typically is, and I believe she's doing a piece on this, and she and I were having a conversation about this the other day. If you think about the timeline, our election was on November 5, and this law went into effect on December 13. And now here we are, January 15, and you're acting on this. Think about just kind of insanity of that type of speed. This, you know, honestly, it's a bit of a Band-Aid approach because, you know, we have to have policy to cover it. And again, I think we're very, very fortunate here in Sandwich because this is something because before any of this went into effect, we were at 100% of kids achieving the CD anyway. But that's not the case, even in some of our neighboring districts, and there's a much, much higher level of concern.
I'll just say, I think there was some discussion, what, you know, is this something for the policy subcommittee? I think keeping it in the student handbook is the right place. It's much more nimble to update this than to our policy manual. And let's be honest, the only people that look at our policy manual is probably the policy subcommittee, whereas this is very accessible to families and parents and students. So I think this is the right way to do it.
I would also say congratulations to our faculty because they've been so proactive about real-time assessment of student in class, on content, in areas. Because it's a little regressive, to my point of view, in some ways because it doesn't have an external assessment tool. And my sense is, at some point down the road, there will be some alternative. So given that, it's important for us to have those internal, real-time assessments that are multiple over the course of the year to really gauge how students are progressing so that action can be taken in real time to help remediate or assist in those areas. So congratulations to our faculty, I think. Any other discussion? All, are we ready for a vote? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Six, zero, zero. It passes unanimously. Stay tuned. Next steps. Okay, next thing. Other, oh, follow-up questions to the cost centers that we discussed last week, budget discussions, all the academic areas, the school, the building-related proposals that we heard last week. No other questions? Seeing none, we will move on to other topics not reasonably anticipated by the chair. I do not have any. Anybody else have anything unanticipated? All right, new business. Presentation of the FY 2026 Cost Center Budgets. And we'll start with Mr. George with facilities.
Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
So you see this facilities budget, not really bells and whistles. It's typical across the board. You can see, we increased probably, you know, we try to shoot for 2%, but in facilities, you really can't keep that number. So I shoot for a 5% increase. So I shoot for a 5% increase across the board. Talking to the different vendors and my suppliers, that's where we need to be. They don't see any major increases over the next year. I think the materials have come down to a reasonable amount. We're kind of steadfast the last year, and looking forward this year, it's not going to be any different than last year. So I think, I think we're looking in a good spot. You can see in some of the stuff, the contracted services, that's gone down a little bit, because I have a very comparable staff that does a lot of the in-house. We have a full-time electrician that does a lot of that, which has HVAC controls. He understands that, he's teaching the other guys. We're doing a lot of preventative maintenance, that's what I've asked to do the last couple of years. So we're decreasing that, that line. That also line represents a lot of the contracted services that went to the Wing School, which we don't have anymore, which we were able to decrease that amount. So you see these lines, you'll see that the maintenance of vehicles, that line has come down. We split that in half, because in the last couple of years, that line has been used by other funding, other sources. So we kind of just took that down, and just, that's just facilities, so we can keep track of it. What's the other one? Yeah, maintenance vehicles down, and yeah, so that's pretty much our line. We think that's pretty good. We feel very confident with that. So that's kind of where we are.
So that's just your vehicles, not any of the?
Correct.
Special ed buses, things like that?
It's just us.
That's under transportation.
Can I just ask a quick, what, could you explain, what is system-wide ground supplies in our line, you know, under the budget summary? It seems, it's gone up a little bit.
System, uh, ground supplies, so that's, that's?
What would that entail?
That entails mowing equipment. We have a lot of equipment that's old, and so we're kind of replacing equipment as it goes, mowers, weed whackers and stuff like that. We're just increasing that, plus I'm buying more of that, because it's not just the two grounds guys that are doing the work, it's my maintenance staff also. So I'm making sure that these guys all have enough equipment to do work together as a team, rather than two guys doing it, four guys looking at it. So we kind of, we tackle things as a team now. It's not just, you know, a couple of guys do it, we tackle it all at, all at once, trying to get things done. So this line you see is basically, this is the admin building. This is the, this is kind of new to us. We've been here a year, I think probably last, maybe a year this week, that we've been in the new building. So what you see is, this is the increase of sewage treatment. You see that went way up, because there was never really sewage treatment at Wing. And this is a tight tank, so this has to be, once a month, we have to get this drained.
It's very pleasant.
Oh, yeah. I usually try and do it during a meeting. So you can see that, that's where we went up there. Ground supplies, I mean, there was really, as you remember the Wing School, there was really nothing done to the front of that school. There was never any really maintenance ever done. So we have to increase that to cover that. We gotta, we gotta keep this building looking like it should, it was like a new building. So you see the increases in that. I know it says it's down, but you can see where we actually put the money aside to just, for this building only, and not keep it apart from the schools. So this is your energy, your energy costs for the schools. We don't see a massive increase of utilities, seems to be flat-lined the last couple of years. So we don't see, from our side, we don't see a lot in electricity and gas going up. With that also is, we don't have the Wing School, so that helps out a lot with our full energy costs. Yep.
Chris, the front door, it closes now, which is a good thing.
Yep.
But every time, the inner door has to be opened by?
Correct.
One. Is that under?
So, we base that off of what we did at the schools. It's called man trap.
We've been having a lot of man trap discussions lately.
It's, it's, it's what we call a man trap. So we treat, I've treated that building like it was a school. So you actually have to, you should come into the front door, you get buzzed in the front door, you should have to ask. And if we, like a school, you would wrap her there and then go in. Here, you don't have to wrap her. So, you know, so basically, Lisa will greet you at the front door, and then she lets you in that secondary door. So it's kind of, it's kind of like a vestibule. In the old school, you remember, there was a phone there at the Wing? So kind of the same thing. When Lisa's not there, we put the phone outside, so we can actually, you can just call in, and somebody will let you in.
But at the high school, nobody comes out to open the door, they buzz you in.
We're working on that.
Okay.
We're gonna fix that, don't worry.
We're working, actually, at tomorrow morning's safety team meeting. We're talking about man trap ID vetting process, really. I don't believe I just said man trap vetting in a public meeting, but yes, that's one of the things that we will be discussing.
Okay.
Especially at the high school, I mean, you, you have the vestibule at the two elementaries, you do not have that close?
That close proximity to the office staff, and that's a concern.
Any other questions on that particular issue?
So as you can see, this is basically a basic summary of what we see. So the average school building cost, we figure is between $2.50 and $9.50 per square foot. Right now, with this budget, we run at $2.42 per square foot, and with the 150 from the town, we're at $2.72. So we're at the lower end. It's not where I'd like to be, but I think that's a bigger discussion of a goal line of where we want to be as a, as a district. That's something, once you guys figure out where we want to be, and that I have something to shoot for.
Go ahead.
That average is obviously a pretty significant range difference. Is, is there any granularity to that based on the age of the buildings?
That's pretty based on, just, that's, you know, the full range is there, because your $2.50 is what you're getting for, you can run that on a new building. An older building, you're going to be up on the higher end. So that's kind of how we, so I'd like to be, because our, our buildings are new but old. So somewhere in the mid-range of this, of this number is where I think we should fall. And from what I'm getting, from what the town wants us to look like, I think in the, I think in the five, five and a half would be where the town would want us to be.
Elementary's at 35 years old, the high school's over, is 50 years old.
Correct. Yep. So as you can see, within this budget too, that you can see the numbers are lower, because we do work across the board with other departments. We work with DPW a lot. Recently, they've been working on our vehicles, so it kind of, that cost is going down. So that's, that's helping out a lot. So we are, you know, we're, we're working hard, getting this, getting it done. This budget, we feel, we feel very confident with it. I feel the staff has really grown over the last two years. I got to reach out to the staff, I got to say, they're doing a great job. We've got cleaner buildings. I think you can see it within the staff and the administrators, that they feel they have a better understanding and a better feeling when, within, within the buildings. I don't know if you guys go in there too often, but please take a look in them, you know. I think we're doing good. I think we're in good shape. So I think, over the next couple of years, as we progress, we'll bring this budget into a little bit, we'll go up a little bit paces at a time. Can't one, can't go for whacking it once, on one shot, we'll, we'll spread it over a few years.
Chris, can you talk a little bit about your second bullet point there? I know some significant work has been done at the schools, I believe, working with RISE Engineering to get more energy-efficient lighting in our schools?
So what we've been working with, we work with, you can probably see it in the schools, we've all do lighting with Cape Light Compact RISE Engineering. We've upgraded all the lighting in all the schools. Obviously, if you went to the town meeting the other night, you saw what the auditorium looked like. That's the first time a lot of people have been able to see inside the auditorium. I went in the auditorium, and as facilities guy, there's a lot of needs now, that I know we got to paint the ceiling, we got to paint the floor, we got to paint the walls. I just saw, I walked in and said, "It looks beautiful," but we got a lot of work to do now, so, yeah. So with, with that, our utility costs should be coming down. What I've seen over the last couple of months since we started this, because it hasn't been a full year, I need a full year to really take a look at it. What I've seen is the energy costs at our schools is coming down. Every month, we get the bills, the bills seem to be decreasing, and we can, once I get a full year in there, we'll be able to take a better look at it. We're also looking to do some other things. I know with the heating, all the heating units that we put in, hopefully, we're going to get some more heating and cooling at the, at the smaller buildings, the elementaries, and hopefully the new boilers, so that will, that'll create a lot of, lessen the carbon footprint on us, too. We're also looking at possibly doing some, maybe some solar, some solar at the high school. Talking to a company about that right now. I think that's, once we do that, we're looking at probably a 20, 21 to 25% decrease in our utility bills. So I think we're going to be in good shape the next couple of years when it come utilities.
Are you also working on temperature control within a building? For example, I heard this morning that there are parts of the middle high school where you're really hot in one space and freezing in another.
Yeah, I mean, so we did three units at the high school. That's not all of them. There's eight. You know, I'm going to say at least eight. I may be wrong with that, I'll have to ask my, my maintenance guys, but I'm sure, so we did three, they're all the same age, we need to do the rest. There's a lot of cooling issues and heating issues at all the schools, with the age of them. We're working on them today, we just had something go at Forest Hill that we had to work on. But we will, we're working on them as we go.
Any other questions for Mr. George? Thank you very much.
Real quick, sorry, there's nothing really exciting in this. One question I did have, I mentioned this, the soup, when he did the general presentation last week, the 200 grand to re-carpet and redo all the floors, is that going to be sufficient? I know it's a three-year plan, but is that going to, is that going to get us 100%?
I don't, I don't think we'll get to 100%. I think what's going to eat a lot of that cost up is our libraries, because the libraries, we got to remove everything, and removing all those books and removing all that stuff is going to cost. I know my last, as we did that, I believe it was, it was, it was a few thousand dollars, probably in the 40, 50 range, in order, just to get the books out. Because they bring them out, you got to do the carpet, you got to pay for them, and get all put back in. Of course, that's, you know how it goes, prevailing wage, bid it out. So those are where it's going to cost. I think, once we get these next, these three years done, I'll have a better understanding, probably in end of next year, of where we're looking.
Yeah, if, if we're not going to meet that target, if, you know, let's be upfront about it, and if we have to, that's a keep, I think that's an important keep the faith with the staff and the students, that 30 years is enough. And I know, I'm preaching to the converted here.
Yeah, I mean, if you look at the numbers that we did last year, you're looking at, you figure, you just rough number, a quick number, about $10,000 a classroom. So you multiply it by the classrooms we have, you'll be able to figure it out. Plus, it's, it's the libraries that's that real question mark. We need to know what that's going to cost.
The only other thing, going forward, as we go from this table to the FinCom and to the SLUC board, eventually town meeting, while this is an annual budget, there's just going to, as you well know, there's going to be a lot of questions about the debt exclusion and the 13 mil and where we're at in that. So we just need to be prepared for that. They're going to, those wires are going to cross in the, in the future presentations. I realize this is just a fiscal year piece, but just, so we can, we're ready to answer those questions as well.
And I think, as has been discussed in other forums, the detail, this is, this is high-level budget, right, by Cost Center? But I think there's a great interest by a cross-section of the community to know how we are using those Cost Center funds to address specific items, and I think we're going to work on that for the FinCom as we go forward.
Okay. Yep.
Anything else for Mr. George? Thank you very much.
I just want to say one thing, I want to shout out to my staff, my custodians, my maintenance staff, my admin staff. Without them, this budget wouldn't be able to happen. Their work is commendable. Our custodians are an intricate part of your building. Our maintenance staff are there to work for the building, and I just want to get, make sure that those people are appreciated as much as our teachers and our admin staff. Thank you.
Thank you.
You got to show the last slide.
All right.
Our, our facilities and maintenance people are much more attractive.
They don't smoke in the boiler room.
Don't smoke either.
Only they're not smoking, correct.
Thank you. All right, people services, Mr. Bernard McNamara, again.
So I want to go over the student support services budget. This includes special education and all other areas under people services, so homelessness, foster care, transportation services, tutoring services for medical needs. All of that kind of falls under this, and this is where the, where we pay for, for those services. There's not a lot of significant changes in either of the two tables that I'm going to show you. We did have a decrease in our contracted services, just more services that we're able to provide in-house, less specific services that are provided for students who have very unique needs. We still have those, where we have to hire outside vendors, and that's where that line comes from. But we're projecting a slight decrease, a 7% decrease in the contracted services line. That's the, the biggest change that you're going to see on the next two slides. We also have a decrease in special education conferences. So this is a line where we would typically use for legal conferences, professional development around things like the services that need to be inside of the IEP, and how to best hold IEP meetings. We have had, the second bullet there says shifting conference amounts to budgets, that's, should say, shifting conference amounts to grants. The DESI has provided a grant, the 274, which is focused primarily on the new IEP form, but it allowed us to use it for the purposes of writing a better IEP. So some of those needs that we previously had in the budget, we were able to kind of shift to those, to those grants. So we had a fiscal year '24, 274, and we're expecting another one this year, and then we'll use that for this year, next year, and then after that, we may see that line go back up. But for right now, we have 11% decrease in our special education conferences. This is used for our department heads, this is used for myself, and sometimes we will use this for special education teachers as well, when we really need to focus in on a particular area of expertise or knowledge that we want to obtain from somewhere else. Special education testing and assessment services, we did spend a little bit more than the current year with an update in testing for our occupational therapists and our physical therapists. It's one of those situations where a test comes out with a new version, and you kind of need to go to that new version ASAP. So we kind of foresaw that coming, and so we, we were able to provide that this year. But I do expect that those needs will drop just, just a little bit, just a $400 decrease with our testing and our assessment services. Everything else pretty much stayed the same. We had some slight changes with our collaborative costs of an increase of 151, that's just our membership to be part of Cape Cod Collaborative. This table is our student support, our, what we call our special education teaching lines. Once again, very similar here, same things I mentioned before, psychological services, we have a decrease of about 25% this year. Special education tuitions have stayed approximately the same. We had a few students age out or reduce services, but that's, that was also met with a few of our tuitions for added district, were, receiving a significant increase. So we have a few students who are in some private day programs, where individual tuition has gone up $40,000 per student, which is significant. And that has to be approved by the state, and then the costs come to us. So even though we were able to reduce the number of students, overall, the tuition line is around the same as what we had last year.
Is that third line? I'm just curious, is it psychological services or supplies?
Supplies.
I'm just, I mean, it's, it's not a very big amount, but what is, when you, what are those supplies?
Sure. So we have our testing kits, and that might fall under that. We do have a subscription service with Pearson to have a lot of our services provided. Our assessments are done through the iPads, but this is for protocols. This is for other assessments or other kits that we might need to do a quick assessment, and that's the line that we'll use to provide, to purchase those protocols or those kits.
Understand, thanks.
Yep. Yes, Sue.
For services such as OTPT, what other? Do we bill insurers for some of that?
No.
We don't incur any response?
We do have Medicaid reimbursement, the money does not go to us as a public school system, we're not?
It goes to the town.
Correct.
Okay.
Yep, and so the, the work that they Yep. And so the work that they do where students who are eligible for mass health, we do submit that information, and the reimbursement goes to the town.
And given last year or the year before, how much does that amount to?
$60,000 approximately.
So a salary.
Right, we'll take it.
I realize, also, the Medicare reimbursement paperwork is an absolute nightmare, and it's extremely laborious.
I think we've, in earlier iterations, we did, last time I was on school committee, when we were doing a lot of our own in-house kinds of things that we paid somebody to do the paperwork in. At that point, it was advantageous, but not greatly so.
We do have some local community services that they will assist parents. So if you are worried, or if you're thinking that you might be eligible for mass health, you could call JRI, it's the Justice Research Institute. There's a number of vendors that will be happy to reach out to a parent and either invite them into their office to help them fill out the paperwork, or we'll provide them with feedback on how to do so. That's more support than we had in the past. It's not really something that the school does. We might answer a question here or there, but we're not the experts as far as that, the eligibility for that. But there are, there are some resources out there for parents who are questioning whether their child is eligible or what's the best way to meet eligibility for the three different eligibility components that we have in Massachusetts. So very similar amounts from FY '25 to the current year. We are continuing to focus on inclusive practices and co-teaching. We have a lot of really nice things put in place as far as logistics go, scheduling go. We still have ways to go with improving the quality of co-teaching and improving the knowledge base for all of our educators, general education teachers, special education teachers. So we have the pieces in place, but we really want to improve the quality and make sure that really solid co-teaching is happening. It's not enough to just make a schedule. You want to make sure that you're getting that impact from that as well. But once again, we were able to use some of that grant funding from the state in order to assist us with that piece as well. And improving the scheduling of support staff, so we did have a decrease. I know we didn't talk a lot about salary here, but making sure that we're using our ESPs and our paraprofessionals to the best capacity that we can, really focusing on efficiencies and scheduling, and I think that you'll see that in the budget as well.
What percentage of our student population is this? Are you, but I'm saying, I'm not being, you know, a bit inarticulate, sorry. But for the special education and student services, or the people services budget portion, what is the, the number of students or the percentage of students that are receiving services?
We have about 24.6% of our student body who have an IEP. That means they're qualified, they are eligible for special education services. Then we have another 2%, approximately, that have 504 plans, accommodation plans, not services, but accommodations that we have to provide. And then the other students that we have who might be eligible for medical services, which we as a school haven't made a determination for, but we're still responsible for providing that tutoring to them. If they go to a 10-day hospitalization, for example, we're responsible for making sure they have continued access to the curriculum.
Ten of my questions is to point out, this is a significant portion of our student population.
It's a significant portion. The state average is around 24%, so we're right at the state average.
Thank you.
And then, a question?
Yep, just a question. You had said that the added district tuitions had decreased some, and you're thinking that the increase in tuitions will be covered by not moving that, that budget item. Is that enough to cover the proposed increases of the collaborative programs as well?
It is, yep. We look at the percentage increase the state provides, and that's calculated in all of our, our numbers to make sure that we're covering that. And there was an offset of $100,000 that we're not putting toward the grant. We're actually going to be using the circuit breaker reserve funds that we have to make sure that we are not shifting the budget line drastically.
Thank you.
Was the increase in the 40,000, was that a day program, you said?
It was.
Day program? That wasn't even residential?
It's not.
Is that part of the legislation from the prior year that increased every private 14%? This is different from that.
It is. It's above and beyond that amount, that 14%. Pretty significant change when you have four to five students attending that one school.
Yeah, that, that went into effect for last year, the FY '24 budget. It was a big hit.
All of our special education-approved schools, they, if they want to increase the tuition amount, there's a whole application process where they have to go to the state, and they have to justify what's, what does that increased amount give each town who sends their students there? So that was approved by the state. We have no negotiation authority with that. And it just, it happens. We don't know which schools might increase at any particular time. But that one was a harder hit.
And your last slide?
So this was reiterating what I mentioned before about the grant funds for the new IEP form. We were in really good place. We provided a lot of in-house workshops and PDs. So the, that grant did allow us to offset or pay for some areas of professional development that were outside of the new IEP form. So that's why we have a little bit of shifting in a few of the lines. We also have an increase in the summer programming of $60,000. That was used for the inclusive programming that we have been utilizing here in Sandwich over the last four years. So as we mentioned in the past, many students who are receiving services on an IEP, if they, if they require ESY, Extended School Year Services, that's usually done in a pull-out model or a C-grid, where they're the only ones who are coming into the school, and we're providing instruction to only to that group. And a few years ago, we were able to, with the federal funds that came from the COVID relief, we were able to shift our model from a C-grid to a B-grid. So once again, that's inclusive practices, providing instruction from a general ed teacher and a special ed teacher to general ed students and special education students. So really focusing on that incidental benefit. And that increase will allow us to continue with that model, since those funds from the federal government have gone away. And I think that, I've heard a lot of positivity from the parents that that is the model that works well for them. We saw a significant increase of students actually utilizing those services. So what that means for our principals are that students show up ready to go. There's not that significant regression or that long time to recoup that knowledge, where we're waiting until November until we're back to where we were in June. So making sure that our students are really starting off the school year on the right foot. And so that's why that shift was added as well. And that was all that I had. Were there any other questions?
I guess not. Thank you very much.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you. And next up is Dr. Quinn with Teaching and Learning. And Ms. Jen Kirk. I should know by now that you're duo.
Good evening. We were taking a page out of our colleagues, our building-based principal colleagues and trying to be brief. So in the spirit of Name That Tune, we're going to try to do this in three notes and unlimited questions. The first slide, we just wanted to talk to you a little bit about a purpose and our structure for how we approach the budget. So the purpose of this is to ensure that teachers and students have the curriculum resources that they need in their professional learning so that all students in this learning community, and all members of the learning community can thrive. And so what that looks like in process is that Jen and I will sit down, we'll go line by line through the previous investments for last year, just to see what is it that we really needed? What it looks like in January sometimes looks very different when we get to July. And then start to remove all of those things that we did, we felt like we didn't need. Part, so an example of that is that we typically needed an additional ARC classroom library set for increases in enrollment. So we knew that we could pull that right out of the fiscal year '26 budget. The next phase of the budget is that we go through and that we look and take a look at the usage data. We have discussions with department heads, the building principals, the coaches, just to see what's the reality look like. So an example of one reduction that we made was a shift from using the iReady, MyPath software and K2. And we looked at different particular strategic investments. And that kind of gets us to the third stage, understanding that as more and more of our curriculum resources become digital, we need to budget for that necessity and the potential cost inflation there. But also try to create some targeted strategic investments, some around STEM programming, our innovation career pathways. So, you know, trying to make sure that we maintain sustainability. So that leads into our, our primary teaching and learning budget. As Dr. Maruszek noted in the opening presentation, the bulk of that increase is contractual with the increase in the amount budgeted for graduate tuition. So that's an increase of $30,000. We were able to provide a couple of small offsets, particularly in the professional development line. As we get deeper into our high-quality instructional material implementation, we need less professional development needed to support that. So we're able to make some reductions there. We've also written some grants. For example, the A-Crime Prevention Grant, which provides PD through facing history for schools where we belong. We also actively work with the 1-8 Foundation to provide grant-funded PD for students. And then we also look to try to provide some, some strategic investments, particularly around deeper learning, STEM programming and things of that nature. So those get shifted into the curriculum supply line, where you can see a slight increase of about $5,000.
And another primary driver of our teaching and learning budget involves our investment in the different technology pieces to our curriculum. This day and age, most curriculum and textbooks are digital. Access through our one-to-one devices for our students. Also, all of the teacher supports are mainly digital. They're frequently updated by the various publishers. And those updates are new annually, and they always come at a cost. We've also expanded our licenses with our Early Bird Dyslexia Screener and our Lexia, which is also a foundational reading instructional tool. The screening for dyslexia is now a state mandate for all students in kindergarten through third grade. So as that mandate has come down, we have expanded our tools in that area. And then we're also expanding the usage of the Alex digital math tool into ninth and 10th grade. That's a tool that's, the seventh and eighth grade math team has been utilizing last year and this year to support their reveal math implementation.
Questions?
The curriculum software, I see an 8% increase. I realize that's prob, you know, that's.
Sure.
Are the, when we enter into these agreement, you know, whatever software platform might be, is it a multi-year agreement we have with them? Is everybody just a yearly subscription and you get what you get, like it's Comcast, so to speak?
A little bit like that. I think the budgeting is, the way we structure is, we don't want to try to take a gamble. So we try to make a, a smart estimate of what those increases will look like. We typically budget for about 5%. Where you're seeing the 8% is that we've got a couple of additional expansions. Particularly that Alex software was not something that was in the FY '25 budget. So that's part of the increase that you're seeing. The Early Bird Dyslexia Screener has been expanded to a new grade level. So that's part of the expansion you're seeing. We try to offset some of that as well by looking at some of our supplemental software tools, like a Quizlet or an EdPuzzle, just to see, you know, what that usage looks like to make sure that we're investing in the tools that they, teachers are using on a regular basis. We'll continue to look for efficiencies to try to consolidate some of those, those tools. But the bulk of what you're seeing, particularly in that 8%, is the inflationary cost combined with some expansions of some key digital investments for supplemental software instruction.
Are these subscriptions like individual license based on student population? Or is it like a band, if you have from 100 to 200 students, it's this? Or is it down to like the individual number of?
It really varies depending upon the vendor that you're working with. So oftentimes, they are per student. So with the Dyslexia Screener, for example, if it's about $11 per student. With other licenses, it might be for a site-based license. So the Lexia license is for, you purchase it for the entire building. So it really, it varies. And sometimes you have the option to purchase a site-based license versus per student. So we always are running those numbers and really trying to figure out what's the most cost-effective.
The other thing to piggyback off of that, too, is that because a lot of our curriculum software is digital and year-to-year, it allows us to be able to pivot and puts us in somewhat of a good negotiating position with some of our textbook vendors in that we'd really only be paying for professional learning. And if teachers feel like they can make the switch, we always do that in consultant, consultation with them. It's not like we're investing in a textbook series that we need to pay off and keep over a series of years. The other piece of it, too, is that a lot of the tech curriculum software are now bundles. So you get your, your digital license and your physical copy all in one. So the iReady is a prime example of it. They're digital, they're workbooks, their physical workbooks are bundled together in that software.
So in terms of bundle, is it an all or nothing? Or does grade level make some decisions that this will really work for us, but these pieces are redundant and we can do it our way? Can you break up the bundles?
Also varies. With the Ready Math Program, we do not break up the bundle because it's the student work text, kind of, you could envision certainly a traditional student workbook that's consumable. But they, it's not an exact replica of what's available to the student online. So there's different facets of the program that they access in the workbook. Oftentimes, the homework pages might come out of that, certainly. And then the online access is a different facet of the program. So to really implement the full curriculum with fidelity, we need both. But there are other examples, smaller software items. For example, we have a supplemental social studies subscription in, at Oak Ridge for fourth, fifth, and sixth grade. We just utilize the online version. There's an interactive student notebook. And we didn't feel the need to purchase the consumable alongside that.
The other piece in terms of bundles, too, is let's just take the iReady software. We can decouple the diagnostic from the MyPath software, which we did in K2 for, for our literacy, and then reinvest what we would have paid for that adaptive software into something like Lexia, so we're not paying for both.
And just at the middle school where it's content-specific, subject-specific. I mean, I've said this here, colleges are moving toward open source, particularly in areas where there's good open-source materials out there. Is there the opportunity at the middle high school, at the high school level in content-specific areas to, instead of using fancy schmancy, highly polished publisher materials, to use more open source where it's appropriate?
That's mainly the status and the reality right now. A lot of the curriculum is homegrown and developed by our educators. One thing that's becoming complementary is that the state is investing in high-quality instructional materials that are also open source and providing grants to support the implementation. So with the exception of, I mean, basically math at the middle school is the only one that I can recall off the top of my head that has any sort of curriculum software or primary curriculum resource that is digital and paid for subscriptions. We have some supplemental resources, but that's, that's the only one.
That's good to know. That's good to know. And I don't see it in my position to second-guess. But, you know, it's like anything else, the digital world has us kind of hamstrung. Once you're in, you're in.
Yes, and it also probably gives us some opportunities to pivot as well.
Yeah.
That's a giveth and taketh away.
Well, one-year license, as opposed to a three-year subscription, could be advantageous, I would think.
That is, that is a bit of a challenge. Sometimes there are discounts available for the multi-year, but that poses some other challenges for us.
Oftentimes, the multi-year subscriptions require payment upfront for all of the years, which is not something as a municipality that we're able to do.
Any other questions for?
Anything else? Well, going back to the contractual increase in the graduate tuition, I know that's an $80,000 line item. How many educators does that support in a typical year? Or 80,000's a new number, but how many, how many, how many classes or how many stu- how many of our teachers are taking advantage of this?
If you give me one moment, I'll be able to-
Quite a few.
Yeah, in the hundreds.
Quite a few.
What's a typical graduate course cost at a state university?
So it's capped at $800?
Okay.
Well, I didn't, I didn't know that, so I learned that. So it's, so it can be upwards of 100 educators. Got it. That's very helpful.
Depending on how many courses they take.
Understand. And the, this is not a dollars and cents question, and I, kind of, Sue's comment, it's the world we live in. I acknowledge that. Is there any really smart person who's done an assessment of student achievement of the old-fashioned textbook versus the fact that everything's online now? And it's probably, it's probably hard to get a control group in this day and age, but I'm just kind of curious if-
I can look into it. I would presume the confounding variables that would be introduced to be able to tease out, like, some sort of regression analysis to be able to say, yes, it was the hard copy textbook, but I-
It kind of hurt my head just to say that.
I'll be happy to take a look for you.
No, I'm just, I'm not trying to make a research project, and I underst-, it's the world we live in. It's where we're at. But I, sometimes I wonder if it's better. That's all. Maybe Dr. Coyro can help you figure that one out.
With regard to textbooks, however, are teachers able to basically construct their own textbooks? I know at the college level, it's 34 chapters in the textbook, but the way I teach the course, my syllabus, I don't need all 34 chapters. So with some publishers, you can buy the chapters that you're going to use. Is there that possibility at K-12? No?
And keep in mind, and I, not to speak for Jen, but I think I am going to speak for Jen on this one, when kids are learning how to read and, and, you know, there's basic literacy and they're learning basic numeracy, you want to make sure that there's consistency. And I think in having the ARC program and Ready Math, a lot of hard, hard work has gone in, you know, from our administrators to our instructional coaches to Jen leading our instructional coaches, to ensure that our kids have a consistent, I'll use the Doug Reeves term, a guaranteed and viable curriculum, that they're getting the same thing across, you know, eight or nine classrooms at the same grade level. So having that consistency, and yes, there are some significant costs with ARC and Ready Math and Reveal Math, but ensuring that we have that consistency is extremely important. Did I do a good job, Jen?
You certainly did. And I would just add, the bulk of the technology piece for ARC, our literacy program, is in the data management software and the teacher manuals. Our kids, thank goodness, have a ton of hard copy real books in hands at all grade levels. So we're not, you know, giving them e-readers and things of that nature. So, you know, we really value having high-quality books in hand, and that's a big piece of, of our literacy curriculum.
It's the world we live in.
It is.
I think on the Alec, the iReady and the ARC, in the next few years, you're going to have real data to support the investment.
Yes, and the, the data management pieces of both of those curricula are really incredible and have really helped us move forward with our analysis of data and, and warehousing it all in a efficient way.
Any further questions? Thank you for all you do and for all our faculty who are so invested in all of this.
Thank you, folks.
And that brings us to technology. Mr. Harper?
I will say, there are some benefits to those digital textbooks. You know, you could increase the text size if you have a person that has a hard time seeing. You can translate those, that text to other languages. You could have that text played back as an audio file. Those are all things you can't do with a paper book. You can stand on it.
As an old person, I like that feature of things.
Just saying. So for the technology budget this year, basically, it's, it's a lot of, in the world that I live in, it's a lot of, like, things go, things go out of style pretty fast. And so we try to hold on to things as long as they're viable, but they, another way, need to be replaced. And so a lot of my budget, all the time, is just replacing things. And it may be a newer version of the thing that we had before, but it's a lot of having cyclical situations where a thing comes, we use it for a while, and then needs to be replaced again. So that's the same thing. Computers, a lot of computers. So we're going to replace all the staff, seven to 12, all the staff and the administrators' laptops this year. We were looking at potentially going with a Chromebook for them, a higher-end model Chromebook. We did a, some studies and some investigations with the department heads and the administration, and just found out that, that while we have been doing that successfully in K6, we're just not quite ready to do that yet in 7-12. We just need to be to cover all of the different applications that are accessible to them, to make sure that we're not cutting anything out of their curriculum. And at this point, we're just not quite there. So that would have been nice from a security perspective and cost perspective, but it's just, we've been, we've tried it twice now, and we're not quite there. But I think hopefully in the future, maybe we'll get to something, or whatever the thing is, the next time we come around. Because we won't be replacing those again for four to five years, so a lot can happen in four to five years. Same thing with the student Chromebooks. We have a regular replace cycle, seven through 12. So all new seventh graders get a device. They keep that device with them, seven, eight, nine. They get a new device in grade 10, and they keep that device, nine, 10, 11, or sorry, 10, 11, 12. It's a little bit different, K6. We actually don't even have that many Chromebooks in K. We mostly use iPads down there because they can't type yet, so they're not super useful to them in the really early grades, PK, EK. But then, as we get into sort of grade one and grade two, we want to get them access to those devices because they need to be ready to take MCAS on them in grade three. So they need to understand how those devices work and be functional with those. So we don't replace them as often, K6, mostly because they don't go home, they're not packed around as much. We do assign a device to a student so that it's their device, and if they treat it well, it will stay nice for them. They're not having to, like, pull the dirty one out that Billy didn't clean or whatever the situation is. We, we do take the work of moving them along with them. So the device that you might have in first grade is the same device that you'll probably have in second grade. We'll move it up for you. But because they don't go home, they last a little longer. The ones that go home in backpacks all the time do get a little bit more roughed up than the other ones, so we replace them just a little bit sooner than the others. We do still have, the high school is still the only campus we have a computer labs at this point. We do have, like, technology labs where we do different things, but we don't have computer labs in the sense that you would experience what you would think is a computer lab. The computer lab is basically there only to provide software that can't be provided on the device that the student has issued. But in the high school, there are several of those. So in the art department and engineering departments, some in the technology and computer science departments, there still are softwares that we need to provide that won't run on the Chromebook. It's less and less, and we sort of, and we've been dropping on average about a computer lab a year or two, but we still have a few up there. So there's one that needs to be replaced. And then the last big move is replacing some interactive touchscreens at Oak Ridge. We rolled, we've been sort of rolling those around since 2019. The high school got some. Forestale got new ones this year. Oak Ridge will get them this, this coming summer. And then the other nice thing is that all the, all of the buildings, K-12, will have all of the same, at least branded and usable environments. So we can start using PD together across them as we sort of roll out new things to them. It'll be different based on the curriculum that they're teaching, but at least be the same experience, and we can train and support them with that same experience and a new, modern experience. And then the last bit is sort of just continuing on supporting the infrastructure and doing the maintenance and everything that we need to do to make sure that all this stuff works. Because it doesn't matter if we buy all this fancy stuff, if none of it can connect to the internet or work functionally. So we always continue to invest in our, our network infrastructure and our, all the wires and wireless devices and things in closets and ceilings and stuff that people don't see. Those do get attention. And then we're going to be looking at new, expanding some opportunities for us potentially with our bells and paging systems, looking to see if there are ways to sort of like expand that. So right now we have, you know, audible paging that can come in and out of the room, but we're looking at testing some visual paging alternatives also. So if we had rooms with visually impaired folks, that they would be able to get flashing lights or whatever to them, let them know about an emergency. If we could do something similar in areas that might be loud, so like the woodshop or cafe areas, those kinds of places, that we could send alerts visually and not just audio. We could send them both. And then we're also looking at different security tools that we could potentially add to our arsenal as we move forward in terms of having people notify us of issues, like security issues, and being able to notify them that someone else notified us of a security issue. So there are opportunities with stuff that we already have in place that would allow, like, wearable panic buttons and those kinds of things if we wanted to implement those. So we're going to start looking at building out a foundation of those and getting, the way I normally do stuff like this, instead of like throwing a bunch of it at it and see what sticks, is we sort of start with some small areas. We implement it in small areas and then see how it goes. And then if things are successful, then we can move forward with a larger rollout, either by building or by district. The next one is licenses. So the same, this is a separate set of licenses, unfortunately, from what Dr. Quinn and Ms. Kirk talked about. So this is stuff that doesn't, it's not teaching and learning related necessarily. It's like all the stuff that we have to pay software-wise to support all the hardware that we have. And so it's a lot of different things. Some of it is our financial software, some of it is student data software. We have, our bandwidth is in there, like, our basically the access to the internet for all the buildings, support and software, you know, renewals and all that kind of stuff for, like, all of our firewalls, all of our endpoints, like, all that kind of stuff. We have endpoint detection software, security software, all that kind of stuff, is in, that kind of stuff that lives in this line. And in the, sort of the same tone that we had before, everybody is moving to this model. In the past, when you could buy a version of a software and keep it for 10 years, if you didn't mind that it didn't get the new fancy look, we're not really in those modes. They're not really selling us that kind of stuff anymore. So it is, we have threatened to leave, and I have walked out on people before that come to us with ridiculous, you know, we had, like, our, like, teacher, like, call in, like, our, basically our attendance kind of apps for teachers, like, I'm not going to be here, I need to find a sub, kind of stuff. They tried to give us a 14% increase, and I told them I wasn't going to pay it, and we left and went somewhere else. And that's sometimes a big lift to do that, but sometimes it's worth it to be able to do that. Sometimes we can go with another vendor and find some cost savings there. So we have done that. You just have to make sure if you're going to bluff that they don't call your bluff, you have to be serious to do that kind of thing. But we, but we do do it occasionally. So licenses is, is just going to keep, keep getting bigger every year. Every time I come here, it'll always be bigger because everything's moving that way. Anytime you buy anything now, pretty much, that's connected to the internet, you have to pay a software license associated with it to keep it safe and updated and making sure it's being patched and all that kind of stuff to be able to use it online.
So is that six and a half percent reflect the increase in the, just the annual increase? Or have you expanded the number of licenses you have?
We've expanded the number of licenses. So there are, there are things in this line that are, we're offering more of, or we're changing the way that they're being deployed and that kind of thing. So this isn't just a six and a half percent increase, like, over the, there, not all companies will hit us with a 6% increase. Most, most of our, no, I wouldn't say most. Some of our companies like to stay in the 2% to 3% range, but there are others that hit us with 8% every year. Like, that's just the way that it is. And so we sort of land somewhere in the middle. They rarely, they very rarely stay flat because they come to us saying, well, we've given you this, or we've given you that, or we've had to do R&amp;D to get you this or get you that, and that's what you're paying for. Equipment, we talked about the equipment replacements that we're doing. So laptops, computers, and screens. There's not a whole lot in that line this year. The stuff in there is kind of pricey, so we're not doing 55 things. It's just, just the three things this year.
Bryce, what's the lifespan of those touchscreens?
So those screens should, should last longer than we probably want to keep them. I mean, in theory, they would last a long time. The problem is, the screens that we have now, or a batch of, a bunch of the screens that we have now were rolled out during the COVID era, where things needed to be extra flexible. And so all those screens, or a lot of them were on carts connected with long cables, sort of like what you see here. Every class is like that. So think of a first-grade classroom with these screens and wires everywhere. They've taken more hits than they should have. So one of the things we did when we rolled them back out at Forestale with the replacements this summer, is they all were physically mounted to the wall. We asked them to find that teaching area, mount them on the wall. There are no more moving parts, and we expect that some of the damage we were seeing to ports and, and motherboards and those kinds of things inside, because they're basically big computers, we don't expect to see those moving forward. So we should get, you know, seven, eight years out of them moving forward, I would expect. Like I said, it'll be something we'll want the next thing because of its, I don't know, its clarity, or its connection method, or its, whatever it'll do that I don't know yet. We'll want that thing probably before they stop working.
You do with the old computers?
So it depends on the age of the computer. Some of the, some of the older computers we will take back and we'll basically refurbish, and we'll use them as loaners, we'll use them as testing devices, we'll use them as other things that can be used in the district. We'll move them around. Depending on, some of them we'll get back that are damaged, we'll take them apart and save the parts that are good and toss the parts that are bad. And when I say toss, we, we e-waste. We basically recycle everything, so we don't, nothing goes in the trash. But basically, we, we use almost everything until it's parts. Like, when the e-waste comes, it's, it's boxes of pieces. It's not full-size machines almost anymore, like, because we have really talented people on my staff that can take all that stuff apart, and they'll take, you know, the Wi-Fi chip out and the motherboard chip out and the whatever chip out. And then if something breaks, they can take it apart and put those new pieces back in. And we'll recycle screens and keyboards and all those parts individually. There's big boxes of tiny screws at every varying length, and we keep all of that stuff until it's no longer usable.
Kudos to them for that.
So in terms of concerns and comments, they're basically, again, back to replacing things. So just when you feel like you're finished with something, you got to start over again. So like, the auditorium has been a big push for, like, probably six years. So it was, it was getting screens and projectors in there, and then it was getting new audio systems in there. Then it was like making those audio, audio systems and microphone systems work for KTC. And then we moved to lighting systems, and then we put seats and carpet and all that kind of stuff in there. But now it's been six, eight years. We might need to start looking at some of that stuff we put in in 2017 again. I think we've still got some pretty good life in them, but it is one of those things we'll need to keep monitoring it, because what we don't want to do is have it start failing on people in a space that's that big and that important. You don't have an event in there, and you want things to not work, so.
The head mics for theater, do we, is that relatively new?
So the mics that the, most of the actors wear on stage are not ours. So those are rented for the event. We only have a small number of wireless mics that we use for, like, school-based events, but we don't have, those things are expensive, like, really expensive. So like, one, one or two mics and a receiver is like many thousands of dollars, like $5,000 or $6,000 apiece. And so if you need 26 mics for a presentation, we can't afford to have those around most of the time. I think they're, I don't know, I think Robbie Jarvis gives us a pretty good break on that stuff, but I think they get those from them, and they, they source them for the two shows that they need, and then we don't have them after that.
They seem kind of tricky, too. It would, to own them and have to deal with the idiosyncrasies of them, be a lot of work.
There's, there's, I mean, having that much wireless stuff talking to each other in the same room with potentially 800 or 900 people with wireless stuff in their pockets makes things complicated, for sure. And there's a bunch of FCC regulations on top of all that, too. So that stuff is, is tough to do in terms of making sure that there's all, that all works together nicely. We have built a foundation in that system that we have lots of open inputs so that we can bring things in for events and then bring it back out when we're done. So there are, like, I think 32 open ports that we can just sort of use. They're available and tied into the system, but we don't, they're just waiting there for, we need them. Same thing for, like, town meeting on Monday. We bring all that gear out and set it all up, and then when we're done, we like take it all back down and put it in a thing, because it's not something that stays out and gets used all the time.
Thank you.
I mentioned licensing costs are going to be a concern forever. And then just the move, the move to Chromebooks, you know, it's eased support and repair. They're just, they're less complicated in general. It's a lot easier. Like, if someone comes to me and they're having a bunch of problems with their, with the Windows computer, it's a lot harder to sort of just give them- move, the move to Chromebooks, you know, it's eased support and repair. They're just, they're less complicated in general. It's a lot easier. Like if someone comes to me and they're having a bunch of problems with their, with the Windows computer, it's a lot harder to sort of just give them something else and let them move forward. I can, you can give me a Chromebook and I'll hand you another Chromebook and within seconds you have the same experience you did 30 seconds ago with your other device. And so, and plus a bunch of security positives and stuff will come along with that. So it'd be great if we could work on that. But if we're not ready, we're not ready. Again, we talked about losing some computer labs across the district has, has helped us with funding because those again are, are expensive to replace. And then we want to do, look at sort of long-term, how can we make these Chromebooks work as long as possible? We don't want them to be, you know, burdensome to the students where they get to the point where they're not working properly, but we do want to hold on to them as long as possible and find where that breaking point is and just stay just for it, just before they stop being something we can use on a regular basis. And then the last slide I think is just a summary. So there's not, there's not a ton of change like across the board. So licenses is up six and a half percent as we discussed. The curriculum software line, Dr. Quinn and Ms. Kirk talked about. Tech supplies is, is flat. And then equipment actually isn't, isn't up that much either. So school choice is, it doesn't look right. The math on that doesn't look right. So we're only up $1,000. It doesn't seem like 14%. But anyway, maybe I made a mistake there. But the school choice stuff, we buy them relatively the same kind of stuff every year for the most part. We get them roughly from the same manufacturer and we keep them down. So we've looked into leasing to own, we've looked into other kind of different things. We've looked into leasing and returning them. And for us, because we have those folks that can take everything apart, we're, we find more ROI and just sort of keeping them until they're dust and then letting somebody recycle them.
What is that? The school choice?
So school choice is, is the, the funds that we get, is it from the state?
Right.
Yeah, we, we use school choice funds, approximately $5,000 every kid that chooses in for really two key pieces, to offset some of the salaries from the operational budget, but also a good chunk goes towards technology purchases.
There are earmarks on that money that says it needs to be spent in a certain way. And I think the, one of those earmarks is that it needs to be spent in the supportive education for students directly. And so that's where the Chromebook purchases fall. That's an easy thing to say. Well, they're, it's a, it's going in their hands as many, as often as they need it. And so it's there for them. And so we do, we have used that line, I think since 17 or 18 probably, helping us with the Chromebook stuff. But everything else is a regular budget line.
Yeah, I'm just confused with the way it's presented here, that's all.
Yeah, it really shouldn't be shown as a general fund line because it's a revolving account.
Because it looks like an expense, not a...
Well, it is an expense and the school choice revolving, but it shouldn't be shown like commingled with general fund lines.
Got it.
Actually, that increase in, is actually 0.88%.
I think that's all I have.
Any other questions?
World we live in.
Thank you so much. All your team does to keep us running.
Just, I would say, I did see at town meeting Monday night, Bryce was there, helped make sure everything was working correctly and seemed to go off without a hitch. So thank you.
So the last cost center is central admin, kind of district-wide expenses and then also transportation. I don't think there's anything here that's noteworthy that I did not cover in my overall overview of the budget. When you look at central admin, it's really three places, school committee, superintendent's office, and then the business office. You see a pretty big decrease in printing and advertising. I think over the last couple of years, we did go with Comcast to do some broad spots, kind of promoting school choice and specifically the programming at Sandwich Middle High School. That has been pulled out because we felt like it just really wasn't a very effective means of advertising. So you see that reduction there. You do see an increase in the contractual services. For the three of you, and actually I know the whole committee is cognizant, we signed a three-year contract with a firm known as ARX Ed, which does the benchmarking of all various collective bargaining associations across the state. It is really a remarkably valuable tool to have. So we will continue with that even though we are not in a negotiation year. Having, you know, that benchmark data is extremely important. You also see an increase in the superintendent's office in professional development. Realize even though it says superintendent's office, that is not all my personal professional development. A lot of it stems with central office administration, but also the leadership of our district. Over the last three years, we've done really three high-quality days for the leadership of our district. We do two days in June after school gets out of our district leadership team to do planning. But then we also do a day in August of not only our district leadership team, but also our elementary leadership, you know, our instructional coaches, our special education coordinators, our literacy folks, and then also the department chairs at the middle high school as well. So those are some of the costs that are included with that. Then the business office, I think you see an overall reduction of approximately nine percent versus last year. We've been having this conversation about everything going digital. We're actually projecting $5,000 less in district-wide expenses for paper because we are using less paper. So that's good news. A decrease in our audit fees as far as the portion that is being billed, charged to us in contractual services. And then also a reduction in the dues and memberships line because once again, more of the Masbo or the Massachusetts Association of School Business Official lines are being held virtually and also some are being paid through PD lines as well. And then last, as I discussed right now, one of our drivers overall is still the uncertainty with regard to regular transportation. We're anticipating based upon what our consultant is telling us, that's kind of running the bid process, to anticipate a seven percent increase for year one of our regular transportation contract. Again, as I said last week, we should know by the conclusion of this month who the winning bid will be and what that actual percent increase will be. We did zero out the leased vehicle line because we no longer are leasing any vehicles. And then the slight increase in general supplies again is for the maintenance of our special education vans. So you notice, I believe we purchased, was it two last year?
I don't know, that's...
But I'm, I'm just speaking to the acquisition of fixed asset. We do not have that investment in the FY '26 budget. So again, with the offsets, the overall increase is about 6.6% or approximately $132,000 for transportation. So overall, again, as I said, the biggest driver at this point is that increase in regular transportation. But overall, these lines kind of support leadership, support the general operations and smooth functioning of our school. And again, I know that this was more of a discussion last year when we were talking about the investment in our own special education vans and kind of keeping that line current. But keep in mind, doing that transportation in-house continues to be an enormous savings. In thinking about some of the emphases for the February 11th presentation to the FinCom, and I'll probably have this for you in two weeks, just to kind of see a comparison of our special education transportation costs versus some of our neighboring districts that either A, use the Cape Cod Collaborative or do it on their own through private vendors. The amount of savings is tremendous. So that's essentially it. Happy to take any questions on any of those lines.
I know this has come up again, time and time again, the question of, and it's a delicate one. How far do we go to provide full transportation for our students? Would it be worthwhile to do some kind of study or analysis based on the routes we have now to see if there's more efficient ways of doing the routes, given that there is some areas probably where buses go by significantly empty? I don't know. I don't know that, I just think I need more data on utilization routes, where the routes are, how many people go on at each street. I mean, you come down Quaker Meeting House Road and it's like stop, 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 stop. One student, Quaker Meeting House Road is the main thoroughfare.
Sure.
So obviously that's, that's a difference. But even within Lakewood Hills, for example, just so we have some data as the costs begin, really do increase with each new contract to see what the need is, where the high needs, and is there an opportunity for efficiency?
I think there definitely is. I mean, to their credit, realize Lucini, like most companies, they use software to come up with the most efficient routes to ensure, you know, they're spending less money on gas and so on. But I think it kind of speaks to the larger issue, you know, that we were talking last week about, you know, we are a unique community in the sense that we do not charge any busing fees whatsoever. I think the study piece is important and we could have people from Lucini come, we could have our busing coordinator, Lee come and kind of speak to some of that data. But I think we would probably also be well-served to survey our families as well as far as, you know, finding out what their needs are.
Yeah, correct me if I'm wrong. I'll admit my ignorance, I'm an expert on the busing contract. They look at, you know, the students at Oak Ridge where they all live, they put it into the, they crank it out.
Yep.
Even though that mom or dad might drive that particular student to school every day, by our current policies and procedures, that bus is still going to stop at the house for that one day that maybe they decided not to.
They'll stop at the closest cluster stop.
Right.
And they do take into, they do take into account that child does have the ability to hop on that bus whenever they want because that's their right.
Right.
As a taxpayer in Sandwich. So they, they put that all into the calculation when they make up the routes and how many buses are needed because we're going by how many, how many kids could potentially get on that bus versus the reality of the situation.
So the, the future bus contract, is that a three-year?
It's a three-year with two extension years.
Two-year rollover, yeah.
Who knows where we are next year, two years, whatever. Let's say we do look at whatever that might be. You know, you do a survey and we find out, okay, maybe these people don't need it or, you know, and I'm very sensitive to it with, as Sue mentioned, I think providing transportation is an inherent part, is a, is part of our responsibility. I also wonder, where is that tipping point? Are we spending money we don't need to spend because people aren't using the, it's driving by and not picking the kid up. And if we charge the nominal fee, would that bring those people out of the woodwork and then we don't need to stop there and then we save bus routes? Is, how is the contract structured? Is it, is it assuming X many buses or is it per number of students or per mile or?
No, the contractor is, the specs were written that we can add or drop buses without penalty. So if we were to go to, you know, a nominal fee for something, what happens is the people that sign up, the routes are done based on the number of people that want to take the bus as opposed to the number of people that could potentially jump on a bus. So you'll see a great reduction in the number of buses.
Usually the, the contracts are structured bus cost per day.
Right.
Got it. So if we used eight buses instead of 10, the contract in future years could be less.
Correct.
I, I assume so, but I just wanted to clarify in my, and verify in my own head, that's how it would work. And it's a much bigger nut to crack longer term.
And I'm not suggesting that we do away with free busing, but I think each year, with each contract, it behooves us to look at the utilization and the need, certainly including parents.
Yeah, I, I don't like it either. I just don't know how, what, I'm just struggling with the, what that mechanism is to create the most efficient buses and not, both from a cost standpoint and from a, you know, our friend who comes to visit us regularly about, about buses, if we can put less buses on the road, there's a lot of benefits to that. Traffic and everything else, so.
Any other comments relative?
This is a total budget relative question. So we heard about professional development and a bunch of different cost centers. And then we also heard from, from Chris and Bryce about how they've got very staff with very specialized skills that are helping reduce our costs for repair and maintenance, et cetera. Do those two departments in particular have access to professional development and training as well? So technology, yes, same with...
Any other discussion of the central office and transportation? Okay. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Let's see, other topics not reasonably anticipated. I do not have any. Moving on to subcommittee reports. Any subcommittee reports? No. Any liaison or advisory committee reports?
Just the District Safety Committee meeting. It's going to have its first meeting of the, the new calendar, new calendar year tomorrow. Provide an update in our next meeting.
I just have one about the CPAC. Next Wednesday night, January 22nd, they're going to be combining the Sandwich CPAC and the Upper Cape Tech. It's going to be in-person or virtual, in-person at Upper Cape Tech in the library. BJ McNamara has sent out an email to all of the families about this with a link and a signup. It's about transitioning from school to adult life. And it's next Wednesday, the 22nd at 6 o'clock.
Okay, warrants. Can I have a motion to accept the warrants?
I move that we approve the warrants as presented and signed by a majority of the school committee.
Second. Seconded any discussion of the warrants. All in favor of approving the bar, the warrants?
Aye.
Say aye.
Aye.
Six zero zero passes. Brings us to our second public forum. Anyone wish to be heard at public forum? Mr. Holden.
Address on file.
Mr. Holden was also with us this morning at the strategic planning event.
Charlie Holden, 35 Lakeview Drive, select board member and liaison to this committee. I, I would just like to compliment everyone involved at the kickoff of the Strategic Action Plan this morning, from Dr. Ruth to the administration, to the faculty, to the parents. But the students were so insightful and communicative, it was outstanding for them and a great opportunity that they took advantage of, if I could say it that way. Of these successions now, will there be... Of these successions now, will there be public updates on where we are with this?
So a couple of things, absolutely, on, you know, at the school committee level, but realize one of the goals of this school committee is to reach out to new constituencies. As was brought up during the session today, you know, I think the statistic is something like 37% of taxpayers of Sandwich have children in the Sandwich Public Schools. So we've got this big chunk of people, about 63% of our community, that we want to, as a district, and I know this committee would like to do outreach. So part of that qualitative data gathering process that, you know, Dr. Wintner talked about, will be doing focus groups with different stakeholder groups throughout this community to get feedback and then in turn, reporting it out.
Okay, and then their access, the, a community access to this outreach will be through the school department or the school committee?
Through the school department.
School department, okay.
But we also plan on meeting people where they are. So for example, doing sessions at, say, like the Cal, you know, to meet with various, say, senior groups, doing a session with the Sandwich Chamber of Commerce to connect with some small business owners and so on.
Terrific. Glad to hear it. And all these schedules will be made, of course, public, correct?
Correct.
Okay, okay. Thank you, Dr. Ruth.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to be heard at public forum? Seeing none, move into future agenda items. Are there any that we can think of right now?
This one's longer range. I mentioned it to, I had sent the superintendent and Ms. Nelson a note. When we did the, looking at the handbook, right above the section that we voted on was how they compute grade point averages and things like that. And I asked for a little clarity because it, it shows what an A+ is, is what numerical value of an A+ is versus an A, or a B+ versus a B. But it doesn't say how that is computed into the GPA and also the, if, the various weightings is a, you know, if someone gets an A in a college prep class, is that equal to a B or a B+ or what at a honors or AP? So a little bit more granularity of that in the handbook, and they're gonna work on that. But I look forward to some information on that well after budget season, earlier in the spring.
Anything else related to future items? None? Acknowledgements and closing remarks?
I'll just thank the presenters for everyone who came. It wasn't very exciting, but it is what it is. It's one of our main jobs. And I appreciate, there's, I know there's a lot of work that goes into what is, you know, a spreadsheet. I appreciate the efforts.
I second that. Thank you, everyone, for taking time out of tonight to be here, putting on all this hard work. Thank you, Lisa Silverman, too. You do a ton of work in the special ed office. Thank you.
And I, I appreciate the fact that your effort to make a very complex report brief. But I congratulate the committee on doing their homework to come up with those follow-up questions. And sometimes we know the answer and we ask so that the community will have more information that they can work with. So thank you very much to the committee and to the hard work of our department heads. Can I have a motion to adjourn?
I'm sorry, Bert?
Motion to adjourn this meeting until January 29th at, well, we're gonna be at 5:00 PM, correct?
No. Is it, is it the full committee at 5?
It is.
Okay, so it's part of, so it's part of the meeting, the posted meeting?
Correct.
Got it.
At 5:00 PM.
At 5:00 PM, on the 29th.
Second.
Any discussion?
Is Kevin buying the pizza?
Yes.
Quick vote.
The students, not the crowd.
All in favor, say aye.
Just one point, the, that will be our public hearing. So I know we're meeting with the students at 5. We have to post specifically what time the public hearing is. Like, we can't do that early. It has to be at...
At a time specific.
Yeah, so I think we typically say something like 6:20, 6:30.
Right.
Exactly. And wherever we are on the agenda, we stop.
So the intent is we're gonna spend the hour with, with the student advisor, the school committee advisory committee, and then really, our business meeting will start at 6:00.
Correct. My apologies for the slide error.
So we didn't, we didn't vote yet. So all those is in favor of adjourning this meeting? Aye. 6-0-0. Thank you very much. Have a good evening.